Say it in an orthopedic surgeon.
Where are you?
How are you doing?
How are you guys doing?
How are the stone? Are you ready for the show?
What's what?
Stone.
That's bad.
Are you guys ready?
I just got scared.
First show.
So.
Oh, please, no, just be a moment.
The stall.
Okay. Everybody ready for the snow to come this weekend?
Is it?
Big snowstorm.
Are you ready?
Snow tomorrow and snow on.
Yeah.
All right. All right, we can start now. I'm Michelle here in Maryland, here in Montrose, and we, this is our second year bringing these guys back. Joe McDonald, Marion O'Neal, Andrew Sanderson. So basically, we're going to hand it over to these guys, and then at some point, they will take questions from all of you. So.
Well, thank you, Michelle.
There you go, yeah.
Well, since I'm standing, because you waited for me and the rest of you, welcome and thank you for coming tonight. We are very appreciative to that you're here to be able to, for us to listen to you. So we talked earlier today, the three of us happened to be all together in one place in Wright County. We were at the sheriff's breakfast this morning. Sheriff Derringer had a breakfast and partnered with Rivers of Hope, who do some great work. Anybody familiar with Rivers of Hope, raise your hand. They are an organization within Wright County that helped residents of Wright County. Marion is very involved, so I'll let her talk a little bit about that, because it's a very important issue. But they help families and those who are on domestic bonds or dysfunctional family environment, or wives or husbands that are in dysfunctional families. And they help them to get out of such a tough family environment or abusive environment. They help them with getting a job, learning new skills, helping with work, employment, transportation, housing. They're a wonderful organization, and they've partnered with the Wright County Sheriff's Office for many years now in helping identify those who are in need of help. So we happened to be at the sheriff's breakfast this morning, the three of us, and we talked a little bit about what we want to accomplish tonight. So a couple of things. We want to share with you some things that we accomplished at the session last session, 2019, some of the highlights, some things that were good in Minnesota, some things that were good for our Wright County, some bad things that we stopped, in our opinion anyway, my opinion, and Bruce and Marion will be in their opinion, that we stopped from becoming law in Minnesota, in Wright County, and some accomplishments that's good for people. And then we want to talk a little bit about the upcoming session that starts February 11th, which is a bonding year. And then we want to really open it up and for us to listen. God gave us how many ears?
Two.
One mouth. So we want to listen just as, probably more so than when we talk. With that though, I want to welcome the Boy Scouts today, who are here on assignment, right? We are too, we're on assignment, so hopefully we'll learn together. But we want to open up and have a nice discussion. I think we're kind of a little bit further away. We can either push the tables closer to you, or you guys can come closer, but it is what it is for now. But feel free to be very candid if you have a question during one of our, as we talk. Raise your hand and we'll open up discussion. Like to welcome the three here, Calvin Brandt and John Taggary and my wife Rachel.
Thank you.
So thank you, thank you everybody.
Calvin's home.
It's Calvin's home, huh? Marion?
Well, I'm so glad to be here tonight. Now, this isn't my district, but I was delighted to be here, and I do work with these gentlemen so much, the legislators, so it's really an honor to be here and do a town hall together. My district is actually Buffalo, Monticello, Maple Lake, the townships with those names, and Silver Creek Township. So maybe some people have come from that side of Wright County. And Joe has almost the rest of Wright County, except for St. Michael and Albertville over on that side. That's our principal, Lucero. But you have almost the rest of the county. It's quite a bit, so I'm always jealous, because everyone I talk to says, oh, no, I live on this district. But we do work collaboratively quite a bit. I think the one thing that happened this last session that, for me personally, I'm in my fourth term, was very challenging, was the fact that we had three people deciding the entire state budget and all the policies that did pass. There was only one omnibus bill that passed through the normal process that we had input in, and that was the higher ed bill. So that went through the normal committee process, it came together with House and Senate, and they came together in a bill that they put together in what's called a conference committee report, and that was passed by the Senate, by the House, went to the governor, and he did sign it. That was the only bill that, what we would consider the normal legislative process where we all have input. The rest of the budget was decided by what I would call a tribunal. It was the governor, it was the Senate Majority Leader called Gazelka, and it was the Speaker of the House, who was Melissa Hortman. So that's, you know, Governor Walz is a Democrat, Gazelka is a Republican, and Melissa Hortman is a Democrat. So the challenging thing, as I talked to chairs that had to come before this tribunal and explain their bill and their contentions and their challenges between the House and Senate versions, was that they came with just a couple, maybe one or two people to support them, or sometimes they came just by themselves. But then they faced not only the Speaker and the Majority Leader and the Governor, but the Governor had quite a few staff in that, in the room too. And so who I rely on for my, the experts at the Minnesota House Representatives are nonpartisans. So they're not Republican, Democrat, they don't serve anybody with the Minnesota House Representatives. They were dismissed. I remember coming up the steps of the state capitol, we were in the middle of all of these negotiations, and I met two of the most brilliant men. And I say that with the most humility, because they are just, they are mathematicians beyond belief, they are issue area experts. They are who the state of Minnesota relies upon to do good policy and good budget. And they said, well, we've been dismissed. And I just thought, this is horrendous. How can we possibly do a budget policy without the absolute best experts in the room? So that is what is the most concerning to me. Despite all of that, some of the really challenging things that we had challenges with in the Minnesota House, that, you know, $12 billion of taxes, a 20 cent gas tax, things like that, those were stopped. And many of those things that were considered controversial on either side were stopped. So there wasn't a whole lot of bargaining, well, if you can make this controversial thing, I'll give you that controversial thing, which I also don't appreciate that one bit. That's not really a great way, I think, to make policy and do the budget. But in this case, it was decided literally by three people, and I have a problem with that, because I felt like our voices collectively, the other 198 of us out of 201 didn't really have a whole lot of voice. So that would be my concern. Moving forward, we have, it's usually a bonding time, so we're going to be looking at bonding bills. And I think the governor, was it $3 billion of bonding he wanted to do?
A billion.
So that's probably the very max of what the state of Minnesota could afford to do in the sense of we have a cap, what we can borrow, just like anybody, you know, we have a cap of what we're allowed to borrow. I'm pretty sure that's pretty close to the cap. The House Republicans would probably be closer to, we'd rather see something like an $800 or $850 million. You know, it's quite a bit smaller, and I'm not sure where the Senate's going to land, I'll let the senators pick it out. But it'll be a challenge when you've got, you know, less than a billion and over $3 billion of spending that you want to do in a bonding year. So that's going to be quite a challenge. For me personally, I've got quite a few bills that I want to get through. I've been working really hard, like Representative McDonald has said, about protecting vulnerable people from violence, you know, just in general, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's rape. You know, a lot of people have been watching on the news about rape kits and how they're not tested and they're not investigated. You know, this is supposed to be a heinous crime, and it hasn't been treated as such. And so I've been working really hard to make it actually, you know, I believe rape is a heinous thing, and I, to make sure that women actually get justice, or sometimes it's men, and sometimes it's transgenders and other people as well, but primarily, it's a majority of women. I have a lot of bills moving forward, doing things like that, like mandating actually testing a kid. So it's kind of common sense stuff that you would think they would just normally do. So that's something I'll be introducing, and I'm actually looking for a senator author. Not to put you off the spot. So those are just a few of the things, and I could talk longer, but I'm not going to, because our dear senator has way more notes than I have probably even in my head of what I could possibly say. So while, while I speak.
Thanks, Joe, thanks, Marion. I don't know if I'll stand very long, my back has been giving me some problems. I've got a herniated disc in my back, so if all of a sudden I start sitting down, it's because of that. But I wanted to introduce myself, because just this past session, the people that write up the biographies and everything about who the senators are, who the representatives are, they want to know a little bit about you, and maybe some of you don't know anything about my background. So I thought I'd give you a little bit of what I wrote to put in these little books, a red book and a green book. And I'm just going to read the biography that I sent, that I sent to the people that do the writing and setting up. Senator Anderson was born and raised on a dairy farm in East Bethel, and graduated from St. Francis High School, that's north of Winoka. He attended North Hennepin State Junior College and graduated from Northwestern College with a business administration degree. Graduated from Willmore Vocational Technical School in 1976 with a two-year degree in agricultural business. In 1970, he began his military career in the US Navy active duty. He attended Naval Boot Camp in San Diego, attended Aviation Electronics School in Millington Air Base in Memphis, Tennessee. He then was stationed in Naval Air Station Oceania, Virginia, and his last year was stationed on board the aircraft carrier, the USS Forrestal, Sixth Atlantic Fleet and Mediterranean region. In 1973, he departed the military as an E-4 Petty Officer, Third Class. Senator Anderson joined the Minnesota Air National Guard, 133rd Area Port Squadron, Fort Snelling, 1986, and departed the guard as an E-7 Master Sergeant in 2005. From 2006 to 2010, Senator Anderson joined the US Air Force Reserve 27th Air Force Squadron, Fort Snelling, and he retired March 12th on mandatory orders from the federal government in 2010, having reached the regulatory mandated retirement age of 60 years of age as an E-7 Master Sergeant. Senator Anderson is married to my lovely wife Ruth, who sits right back here. And that was in 2009, after losing his first wife, Dottie, to cancer after 33 years of marriage in 2006. They lived together, Ruth and I lived together in Buffalo. Together, we have eight grown children and 13 grandchildren. Little about myself kind of in a nutshell, to give you some background. I was going through notes that I was being sent from my office and from my staff and researchers, and I came across a little, kind of a funny little thing, but it was, it talked about in sin's grip no longer. But it started out with kind of a little joke, and I thought it was kind of funny. Starts out, "I heard about an old farmer, his wife and their son, who had never been to the big city. So they got into their old pickup truck, drove to the city, and found a place to park. The farmer's wife decided to wait in the truck while her husband and son walked to a gleaming skyscraper to take a closer look. As they entered the massive lobby, they watched as a set of mysterious doors opened, and an elderly woman stepped inside. Then the doors closed. Then after a few moments, the doors opened again, and a beautiful young woman walked out. The old farmer turned to his son and said, 'Quick, go get mama.' I think we'd all like to go back to that, and really get a transformation, get redone, all that kind of thing. And it's the same way in the legislature. There's things that have happened in our past that we would like to see redone and re-purgitated, I suppose. And there are things that a lot of legislators still have on their desks, a legislation that they've tried to pass, that they've introduced, and it still sits there to be, come up again. I know former Representative Phyllis Con, and I walked into her office one day after she'd been there like 34 years. I think she went to 44.
She did.
And she had legislation that she had, has tried to pass back in her first two years in the legislature, and was still sitting on her desk. She literally had piles of legislation in her desk that she just, she knew exactly where it was. She could sit in committee, and you guys could watch her and go, does she really care about this committee? She's sleeping. I mean, her eyes are closed, her head is like this, but when a question was asked her, she'd know the answer. So it's amazing how she had that kind of, but she had such background information on being in the legislature and knowledge of how to do things and to manipulate through the process that she was a welcome knowledge to all of us in that situation. Well, we have a lot of things that are coming up in this legislative session, and this is starting my 26th year at the legislature and the Senate. This is my eighth year starting in the Minnesota Senate, and we have an election coming up. We also have, anybody know what else is going to happen in this 2020 new decade coming forward?
Presidential election.
What's that?
Presidential election.
What?
Reduces.
Census, yes.
And a presidential election.
And a presidential election. So the census is coming up, so that means after the census is taken and we get the numbers back in, we're going to find out if we're going to stay in the same district or not. I was just tabulating today, as I was looking through some of the notes I had, that we have gained just in the last 10 years, another almost 15,000 people here in Wright County. That puts us at about 151,273. My legislative, our Senate district, is about 85,000 people. So we're going to shrink. These people, districts are going to probably shrink. And we're going to have people that are already, we have Senator Scott Lumen and Senator Representative Dean Erdahl that has coca. They might end up, if they get reelected, they might end up getting another town term or more of the area here. People from the Northeast, depends on how it's all redrawn, and that happens in 2021, right? 2021. So Wright County is a growth area, it's really bursting out, and yet, as I talked to somebody today at the sheriff's breakfast, they're struggling to find people to work. I stopped at Coburns, I usually go through Coburns and Albertville, stopped there, and I talked to the lady at the desk, the register, and I said, so how was your weekend? She says, I was working. So how was your weekend for, between Christmas? I was working. I said, really? Really, why? You can't get enough people to work, and if they get young people to come in and work, they'll, their attitude is so poor, they're gone in about a week or two, and they have to rely on the regulars to pick up the slack. And so we're growing a lot of people, but we don't have enough people yet to fill those job positions that we have here, even in Wright County, even alone in the state of Minnesota. So we've got some problems coming up. We've got some crisis situations that are looming, and we've got businesses that are wanting answers from the legislature as to how we're going to resolve this. It's always been mentioned that bonding is something that's coming up. The governor wants $3 billion. We're looking not that much. Looking at maybe $100 billion. I think the last bonding bill that we passed was $998 million, right under the $1 billion mark. Because we have to then pay for that later on, coming up. Someone's going to have to pay that back, and someone's going to have to foot the costs on that thing. So that's what we're looking in the Senate. We've got a lot of people that are asking, because I chair the Veterans and Military Affairs Committee. I've got a signup sheet, it was just sent to me by my researcher, saying that the Military and Veterans Affairs is asking for almost $15 million in additional supplemental budget. Or just, and that's something that would go on top of the bonding if we have a supplemental, if we're not sure yet. But maybe we should just let people ask us questions, or if they have other things we want to add, we can go that way and not take too much of our time, of their time, when they have more questions to ask of us.
Yeah, so we can do that, we can open up to questions right now. That's always a good idea, because we do want to give more time for you guys to ask questions. Or I can just run through a list, we do have a list of some of the things that we were able to, that were stopped at the legislature, and some things that were accomplished. So how does that sound? Can we do that first? So here's some of the things that we were able to stop at the legislature. Tell me if you agree or disagree with some of the things that didn't become law. For example, because of the Republican-led Senate, and thanks to Bruce Anderson, we were able to stop $12 billion with the tax increases. Is that good or not good for the state of Minnesota?
Yeah.
I share your advice and your opinion. So there was, in the House, and the governor's proposed, Governor Walz, who incidentally, I think we all agree, is good to work with, compared to, I shouldn't compare, hang on. We both served with Governor Dayton and Governor Walz. Governor Walz is a decent man to work with, so is Governor Dayton. Walz was very engaging, seemed very sympathetic to some of the issues, especially Highway 12 in Delano and through Hennepin County, and the dangers of Highway 12. He was very attentive to our needs and the safety requirements that we have for Highway 12. He was very much involved in veterans affairs, and especially wounded veterans, and those veterans who have gotten into some trouble with the law. He was very active in that, working with the Veterans Administration and Bruce, Senator Bruce's committee. So I thought him to be very approachable and easy to work with. On the other hand, though, he did seem to get a little bit further to the left on some issues that he promised to support, such as Line 3, the new pipeline, that'll bring precious oil from Canada through Minnesota and down to the Gulf. The old pipeline is deteriorating. It's rusty, and a new pipeline must be put in. Right now, we can move oil through our railways or through pipeline. It's safer through what?
Pipeline.
Pipeline. There's pipelines, if you look at the map of pipes throughout America, gas, natural gas and oil, it's filtered with pipes. It's just all red, the map that I saw. And Governor Walz, initially on the campaign trail, supported Line 3. It would bring thousands of jobs to Minnesota, temporary, but yet thousands of jobs, and create hundreds of millions of new funding through Minnesota, and prevent future oil spills. And he reneged on his promise on that. He changed his mind, and for that, I am not happy. Many people aren't happy that he decided to change his opinion on that. And it becomes a constant battle, as that line deteriorates. So anyway, we were able to stop $12 billion worth of tax increases. An issue that's close to many folks' heart in Wright County, that I've heard from, and I know Marion and Senator Anderson have, is Planned Parenthood wanted to teach sex education in our schools, starting with kindergarten. And the format in which they were teaching is so vulgar, in some prisons throughout the United States is banned, the material that they wanted to teach. And in my opinion, that's one of the most important things that we were able to stop. The teaching that kind of sex education in our schools, starting with kindergarten. I won't even tell you some of the things that they wanted to teach in a book called It's Perfectly Normal. Google it yourself. So we were able to stop that, thanks to the Senate. It passed out of the House. That bill passed.
We didn't vote for them.
We didn't vote for it in the House, but it failed in the Senate, thanks to our Republican comrades in the Senate.
I just want to make one quick comment. Because I've been working a lot in about sexual violence and sex trafficking. And let me tell you what happens when you start sex educating five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, is you're basically grooming them to be violated. And so I actually, I saw that book, and Representative Lucero got up on the floor and explicitly explained verbally what was in it. I sat right next to Representative Lucero on the House floor, and so that was a very, very hard thing for me to sit through, knowing that, you know, this is going to impact very young children in a very negative way, because you are exposing them to things that they are not ready to be exposed to. It's actually part of the grooming process to be, you know, for pedophilia. So unfortunately, that's the end product, is both sex trafficking. And now sex trafficking, the average age of a girl being sex trafficked is now 13 years old, and a boy is 12, average age. So we're talking, it's, to me, it looks like an overall plan, because what Planned Parenthood also does, which is illegal, by the way, is once sex traffickers bring in their 13, 14, 15, 16, whatever-year-old girl that's pregnant, they don't ask any questions. There's video and stuff out there of undercover people going in and presenting a young teen who's pregnant, and they're not supposed to do that, that's illegal to do that, to give them an abortion. So it's all, to me, it's all tied together. And the more I read, and the more I study, and the more I learn about the issue from experts, it's a really bad thing. So thank you for stopping that, because that would have been really, really bad for our children here in Minnesota.
Yeah, if you talk to our Sheriff Derringer and other deputies in Wright County, they'll tell you that sex trafficking is happening in Wright County. At our hotels, especially. So it's a serious issue, and we all, Wright County has partnered with the state in bringing education and awareness to our businesses, such as auto transfer, because it's also through the trucking industry. They see a lot of it at truck stops and hotels and restaurants, and then also working with each hotel and businesses throughout Wright County. So it is a big issue, and we are very aware of it, and it is something that we need to continue to be aware and fight for. Who's happy that we stopped a 70% increase in the gas tax? Raise your hand. Counselor? Are you glad we stopped that gas tax?
Yeah. It was ridiculous.
It was ridiculous. So again, Marion and I in the House failed, because it passed out of our floor, our House floor. But we voted against it. Fortunately, the Senate, Republicans, it failed in the Senate. And that's why it's unfortunate they have the majority. The Senate has the majority by two seats, two members. So fortunately, their two-seat majority canceled the gas tax. And here's why we didn't need it. One is your all, where we have, how much in surplus? Two?
1.3 billion.
$1.3 billion surplus. Each month, each quarter, we get information from Bill Marks, our state general, what is he called?
Fiscal analyst.
Fiscal analyst, with the surpluses, the updated on surpluses. And I think just two days ago, we got an email from Bill Marks from the governor's office saying, there's another $125 million surplus.
In addition to.
In addition to. So we have the money, we didn't need to raise the gas tax. Not to mention, four years ago, the state of Minnesota had the largest transportation funding increase for transportation in the history of Minnesota, without raising taxes. So do you think we needed to raise the gas tax?
Isn't that one of his campaign promises, though?
What?
I mean, I'm not saying that I want the gas tax.
Yes.
But wasn't his campaign promise that he was going to do that?
Yes, 20 cents, yeah.
And that's what he said, when he proposed it, he said, well, the state of Minnesota voted for this, when they voted for me, so.
Actually, he started out at a dollar.
Was it really a dollar?
A dollar a gallon, he was going to start out at.
Yeah. And they'll bring it back again, so we'll fight for that. And then Second Amendment rights. The Second Amendment, anyone appreciate your Second Amendment rights?
Part of the reason I'm here.
Well, fortunately, we were able to kill all Second Amendment infringement bills that would infringe on our Second Amendment. Question? It is the right to bear arms, the right that you should be able to protect yourself and your family with a weapon, a gun.
Oh, no.
A well-informed militia, the citizen, protect, especially from the government, right? Who, if you know, if you're following politics, the state of Virginia wants to take the guns away from the residents. And the governor said, well, send in the National Guard if we have to come in and confiscate your guns. And the sheriffs of the National Guard said, we will not do that. So, so those are some things that we were able to stop in 2019. I'll let Marion and Bruce continue on some of the things that we accomplished. There are some good things we accomplished as well, including some tax cuts and so on and so forth. Any questions, though, at this time?
Yeah, I got a question.
Name it, name it, where you're at, we want to know.
Pardon?
What's your name and where you live?
Roy Andrade, I live here in Montrose on Highway 12. Why do we got to deal with Baxter and Brainerd, St. Paul, for Highway 12? Because they cut off points right out of town out here. When they were doing Highway 12, a guy came down from Brainerd, and I talked to him, and he had a list of two things, back when we walked the highway, what was wrong and everything. He gets back to Brainerd up there, and he says, Roy, I can't help you, they gave me a different job. And I don't know why, we got to deal way up there, we can't deal with St. Paul. St. Paul, I talked to a guy that works for Minnot, and he's way over there on 212, working on the highway over there, and he says, I don't know why we can't come over here either. Nobody's got any answers for anybody.
Well, the transportation, the way it's been set up in the state, we're set up in regions, and we're part of Region 3. And Region 3 goes all the way up to Baxter and Brainerd or the Medge. And we are on the tail end, we're on the very bottom, and we usually are on the very bottom when it comes to funding and getting our projects through too. And so we've got to fight like ATG of toothpicks to get what we need.
I know. But up there, Bruce, some of the roads up there are nicer than what we got on Highway 12. After they cut them slits in Highway 12, out here, you might as well go drive on a washboard, though, bad as it is. Because I find stuff laying in my yard over there, with a dip in the road out there. Huffcats coming off, cars and everything roll down on my property, I can go out there and pick out any stuff.
Maybe we should redraw the line.
Okay, our district has that Combiner Road in Delano. Okay, our district has that Combiner Road in Delano. So any money to go from Combiner Road to Highway 12 or Maple Plain is non-existent, because they spend it in the metro area.
That's the mentor district.
District, we're in District Three.
We're in District Three, but down there.
That's District Six.
Well, when they cut them slits in Highway 12, back, that's 22 years ago, they had a lot of cutting with the saw and everything, state had to die down there cutting. And the red stuff was coming out of the road. All the building to the north of me, they were painting that building and everything, and all that dust was going over on that building. So the paint, state had to pay for that building, repaint it again and everything. There was no common sense used whatsoever.
Common sense is relaxed.
There isn't anymore, just day and age.
Right. But there is something, if you've driven Highway 12 into the cities past Delano, you see there has been some improvements. There's also two roundabouts that are proposed in 1992, and that's partially because of, unfortunately, some of the fatalities that happened on Highway 12, and the work of the coalition of, from Montrose to Dastic, Cucato, to Independence, to Long Lake and Delano, that come together and are part of a Highway 12 coalition for a safer Highway 12.
Well, between Maple Plain and Wayzata, like that old couple that got killed, they thought that was a four-lane road, they'd never been on it before. Now they got them cement barriers up, and people went over in the left lane, and thought it was a four-lane highway. But there was no markings for that, and you're saying a two-lane road.
Well, that brings us to the next piece of business, is distracted driving and hands-free device. So Bruce or Marion, would you like to take that?
Well, the hands-free of distracted driving legislation that came forward, it's been basically on books, or been trying to be put on the books for a number, four, five, six years, they've been trying to push the legislation. And that's basically driving and texting, or driving and talking, using your cellphone while you're driving. And so this year, we finally were able to pass that legislation and get it on the books, so that if you are caught with your phone next to your ear while you're driving, you will get pulled over and be summoned or given a ticket for doing that. Question?
Yeah, but can't Muslim women keep their phone in their wrap?
Well, that's been very controversial.
Is that not the law? They're allowed to?
Yeah.
So how is that different?
We tried to fight against that.
But you're in the Senate, and you have the majority.
But it doesn't make any difference, because you got a governor and you got the House, that we got to come to an agreement, as far as compromise on some of those things.
Compromise on the 20 cent gas tax?
No, well, that, there were some things where you got to come to a point and say, "No, we're not going to go any farther than that." And that, the deal with the, having the phone in the person's headgear, that became very, very ticklish when it came, I wasn't part of the negotiation, but I know that when we came back to caucus, that we became a very ticklish subject, because of the individual that would have been in the Minnesota Senate, who's now a Congresswoman, and others that are of the faith, Islam, Muslim faith, that have the head wraps and utilize that on a regular basis. It became very much a hot heated subject within the negotiations, and like Marion already said, when it all came out, it wasn't settled in regular session, it was settled in a session, special session of, what, three days later, four days later, something like that. And it was between the governor, the speaker, and the majority leader in the Senate.
So, that's one of the other reasons that I'm, thank you for bringing that up, right? Is when we pass a law, right, our law's not, this law, the way that it's passed, supposed to apply to everybody. Like, we're not picking and choosing who has to follow the law, right?
Correct.
So how is it that whether I'm going in to have a photo taken, whether I'm going into a bank, whether I'm going through, you know, TSA, or whether I'm driving down the road, talking on the phone, it is differentiated based on actually religion, or background, or personal beliefs, not the actual law? You know, at the end of the day, you know, if I can, if I can wear the hijab going through, you know, the bank teller, going through the TSA, getting my driver's license photo taken, or talking on a phone, right, does that not mean that I can just, I don't know, wear a headband and shove a phone in it? I mean, the law is not treating everybody the same. And how do we not have an issue with that? How do we not, and this is really rolling back to First Amendment issues, Second Amendment issues, and other issues that are actually under assault. So I mean, thank you very much for helping us out with the Second Amendment, right? But at the end of the day, we have other amendments that are under assault right now, because we're not being treated fair and equitably, right? And when you come to the United States, and you've chosen to be here, and you've chosen to be part of the melting pot, however, I'm choosing to not follow your laws, and now we're acquiescing and making exceptions to laws that apply to everybody and not a few, how we're not up in arms and shouting this from the rooftops and making changes to this? I mean, it's absolutely acidifying, excuse my language, but it's not, it's not fair and equitable, and we're picking and choosing the minority, right? And I don't care who that minority is, and I don't care what the law is. It doesn't matter if it's a law where you consider me the minority. That's wrong, and that's actually not a law. Or I don't understand the law.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please do, please.
So first of all, it's already law, state law, that you can't text and drive. My wife reminds me often that I shouldn't have my phone up here, so I do have Bluetooth. Personally, it's not unsafe for me to be on my phone while I'm driving. Now, when I came back from the governor's, the government center today in Walmart, or in Buffalo, I started at Walmart and got a sandwich, and I was eating a sandwich, falling over my trousers while I'm driving. That's, in the state of Minnesota, that's allowed, right?
Unless you get distracted.
Well, described distracted. So I can eat a sloppy sandwich, which is distracting, but I can't hold this up and drive. So on principle, I think the law is flawed in that respect. Distracted driving means you cannot text and drive. That is a danger. We all know that. We've seen people text and drive, maybe you text and drive. It's very dangerous. But holding a phone up to your ear while driving is not distracted for some people. Now, regardless of the laws, the scarf that they wear, that applies to anyone, male, female, Christian, Muslim, Irish, Jew, whatever, there's no differentiation for that key job or the scarf. So if you want to put a scarf in your ear and put the phone up?
Except for only a small population of, a small section of the population actually wears those. So an exception has been made for a small section of the population. So it is a law for everybody unless you have this personal belief, right? So it's actually not law for everybody.
I wouldn't, I-
And I'm not, I'm not dogging on you guys for the fact that the law is there. What I want to know is what are we doing about that?
Yeah, that came from the Senate. Offensive. Because it wasn't Bruce. It wasn't Bruce. But I would say that we are on the same page, kind of silly that we would carve out a niche. But the state of Minnesota, for the last hundred and some years, have always carved out a niche for groups, be it the sugar beet industry, or the soybean industry, or you name it.
Corn growers.
Corn growers, I use every word.
That's not a law, that's not a fair comparison, because that's not a law that applies to the general population. What the soybean growers do has nothing to do with me, other than the fact that I eat something or wear something that's got soybean in it. The law that has passed for them doesn't affect my daily life.
It isn't a law, or as far as a bureaucratic rule? That's my clarifying question.
Point taken.
You know, I don't, you know, there may be a difference there.
My point was just that, that for some reason, your local officials carve out different groups of people for different, for the laws. And I don't think that's necessarily the best way to govern.
So let me just say one quick thing. What the law actually says, because I love to read the words on the paper, okay? We have a lot of debates, we do a lot of, oh, it means this, it means that. What it actually says, may I have my phone? I put mine on.
Is it law against it?
No. The law literally says you can't have it in your phone, in your hand, and drive.
So I couldn't put it in a headband and do it?
You can. Yes, you can.
Or a hat?
Yep, you can put it in a hat, a headband, you can do, as long as you don't have it in your hand, you're legally driving.
What about wear a baseball cap for a driver's license photo?
I don't know about that. I'm not on that committee. Are you on that committee?
If a woman gets arrested, she doesn't have to take it off. Was it in Ramsey County, and Hannah and both just got their hands slapped by a judge?
I think that was a judicial decision, not a legislative decision.
You can't, if they arrest a Muslim woman, she does not have to take off her hat.
And unfortunately-
And that's the same thing, like she said, if I'm wearing a ball cap, I shouldn't have to take off my ball cap. That's equal, that's equality.
And that's it, I don't care if you're Muslim, or, you know, you follow Judaism or whatever, I don't care, right? I care about whether or not this law applies to everybody, because realistically, if it applies, does not apply to everybody, it should apply to nobody.
And I look at it like it does apply to everybody, because it literally just says you can't put it in your hand. That's why it's called hand-free. So if you want to put a headband, put it up there, you can do that.
Right, but now we're tripling over to the other areas where it applies, right?
Oh, to the driver's license photo?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was administrative decision, not a legislative one. Tackleberry has a question in the back. Mr. Tackleberry, do you want to-
It's interesting that you talk about driving. Let's be honest here, any driving with any device, including your screen on your car, including your Bluetooth, is distracted driving, okay? Now, we know going beyond an attack is absolute stupid, illogical nonsense. And by the way, Highway 12 was like this 40 years ago, these guys came from Wilmer. 40 years ago, to Delano, business guys, obviously, probably Genio, and they said, "We have to change this corridor." What failed were the politicians that effectively changed it, other than an improvisation of some additional passing lanes. So that's the corridor. Any way you cut it, and then you say Wright County's 150, 60,000 people, hello, there's more traffic. But the one thing you can do, the dumbest, stupidest thing we have not done in this state is this. Most people don't even know how to turn on their automatic headlights. Most people that get a rental car have no clue how to use it. Why, what is wrong with the magnitude of our politicians to not realize that running headlights in a car, on a car, should be mandatory 24/7/3/6/5? Okay? Mandatory. You see these idiots that they think are driving stealth cars, going on Twilight, and you flash them 10 times, and the idiots still don't have their lights on. You look at a gray car on a gray day, and that's 90% of our days in this state, gray in the winter. And what does it look like? You don't even see it. And then you talk about a corridor of death. Hell no. How simple would it be to put the effort in one other item and require headlights to be used 24/7/3/6/5 in every car in this state, on every road? How simple? Including semis, and Muslims, and Syrians. But seriously, this is one thing you could add to put, to get done. It's a simple thing, and I am totally shocked every day when I see these idiots driving with no headlights, in snow, in dark, in rain. And legally, I think you are required to turn your headlights on in rain, but they don't do it. And I think that's going to save a whole lot more lives than even texting, potentially, because they don't see this stuff. Okay? But that's an item to put on your thought list to get accomplished in this state, and I think everybody realizes it exists. It's just shocking that we haven't addressed this.
And it has been in legislation before, and they need to take it out.
Why? Some stupid? Why?
So for example, I did a survey about this very thing, because I'm as annoyed as you are. And when I was 15, I was in an almost deadly car crash. So I'm very sensitive about driving and what causes crashes, and I've done, so I'm also on all of the public safety committees. I'm on public safety, judiciary, and corrections. So I, and have been since I first got elected. And I've done ride-alongs with troopers, I've done ride-alongs with all kinds of cops and sheriff's deputies, and on and on and on. And it irritates me to know it. And so I thought, well, okay, let me just ask my constituency, and so I put it out there as a survey, and I got blasted. "Don't do moral laws, we don't want this, don't make us do something else." I couldn't believe the negative react. I don't know, I mean, I couldn't believe the blasting I got from the constituents of Wright County that said, "Don't do it."
The shame is on the manufacturers. GM, GM's cool, because most of their cars go, they like, they're running 24 seconds. Shame is the manufacturers, much like the shame of the controllers and the idiots that own the plane that took off in Tapperaun that got shut down, okay, and the pilots. Shame on them to take it off. Shame on the manufacturers for not making this headlight thing automatic everywhere, every place, every time. It costs nothing, and it is a safety event item that could save lives.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. In fact, I was going to introduce legislation again this session to get at that very issue. And if I hadn't been blasted by Wright County so badly to not do it, I would have already introduced it. So, I don't know. If you find a whole bunch of other people that agree with you, have them contact us, because all I'm hearing is, "Don't do that, don't do that, that's stupid."
You may have a great point here. Contact. How do people know? It's tough. Do I understand, you're politicians, it's tough to be able to walk into any event and anything and say, "Hey, we want to tell you what's going on." But take a look in this room, this isn't a mosquito of the population. How do people know the things on your sheet? Bruce, and I understand them, but how do we get this riddle of what you're all doing on an ongoing, regular basis? How do we accomplish that, so people have an awareness, which they do not have today, as to what's really going on? And I don't know how you do that, I mean, you have to do a town hall meeting every day, every hour. But the reality is, this does not represent the people. And you can't communicate unless we figure out a way how to communicate where they have a voice. That's the big dilemma. What, how do they know what you're doing and how they expect you to do anything if they don't? That's a big thing.
I mean, that's a good point. The two of us sitting here, I guarantee you, are like the most political people you will find in Wright County. Hands down. Not the most political, but two of the most political people, and I didn't know 90% on this page. And shame on me for not finding out this information, but to your point, you could find out this information.
Well, okay, so I can tell you. Bruce and I and Joe typically do a weekly column in the Wright County Journal of Trust, which is also, you can get that online. We also all have subscriptions to an email service, so if you want an email, once a week, you can get that also. We also have Facebook pages. I'm on my Facebook page, probably too much, putting information out, so you can, you can friend me personally, you can follow my legislative pages, and all this stuff has been out there so many times, at least in my district, and my people that follow me. So, you know, you just got to get, you know, read the Journal of Trust, there's articles every, well, Wilmer in session, it's every single week, and Bruce and I for sure have it every single week, and you have it.
Every other.
Every other, okay, so.
I have a card here, my email's on here, you can contact my office, they'll put your email on our list, we'll send everything that we do on a weekly basis to that email and let you know. And so it's available.
Yeah, I want to address that as well. You know, today's politics, national politics takes the air out of the group, right? Most people, some people in Wright County are all over, think I go to Washington. I live in Delano, Minnesota. My wife and I have a photography studio that we've had for 30 years. I have three boys. And part-time, I go to the Capitol to hopefully be the voice of Wright County, to express my conservative, our conservative Judeo-Christian principles. That's who I am, that's who I've been for 10 years. I've been active in my community with the church, Lions Club, J.C.'s, Knights of Columbus, the city council, the Chamber of Commerce, and my folks instilled in me the duty to give back to the community, to be active. But it's not 100% on me to give you all the information. It's impossible. I'm a part-time citizen legislature. Unless you guys want a full-time citizen legislature, I'm out. Our founding fathers wanted a part-time politician, someone that goes and farms and is at home, and then part-time goes to the Capitol and does the people's work in a short amount of time. So it is up to the people of Minnesota, too, and you folks here, you said yourself, you should know as well, to get involved politically, and I'm glad you are, but everybody really wants to know what Trump's doing, and Nancy Pelosi. The local politics aren't as exciting, unfortunately. I think they are.
They're what?
Not as exciting. I think they are.
They are.
So to be one of four, fortunately, we have computers and smartphones, and at all day, And at all day, every day, every 365, you can go on the Minnesota Republic, uh, party, the Minnesota State Legislature and know what Bruce is doing, what Marion is doing, what I'm doing, what legislative work we're doing, what bills I'm proposing. Maybe you may not even agree with what I'm even doing down there. You might be pretty disappointed. I hope not, because I work for the things that I talked about. Our religious civil liberty protection, our right to life, abortion, fighting the pro abortions, our Second Amendment, low taxation, less government, and the disabled. I do a lot of work with the disabled community. I do spend the people's money in my bills to help the disabled community. Your money to help the disabled have a life. That's one of my passions for 10 years. So it is up to you two to get involved and know what we're doing. And then what Marion said, letters and paper, not everybody reads the paper, not everybody's on Facebook. But the state politics always takes a backdoor to the federal, usually. But we're doing great work down there. We hope, we want you to be involved. And if we're not doing good work, you got to let us know that you're disappointed.
The work you're doing, I think the stuff you're doing makes sense. I mean, you look at the sheet, that is a sheet, this all is stuff, yeah, like cash, anybody want to pay one for that? But maybe it really comes down to you have to speak louder and carry a bigger stick.
Hey, Tackelberry, listen here, I'll carry a big stick right here. John's a good friend, he's from Delano, he's going to Chevrolet in Delano. So that's why he's passionate about cars and headlights. So, Leander, you had a question for the group?
Yes, Leander Weider from Minnesota. This surfaced last September, the Weider family had steam engines at the Atwater Threshing Show. And of course, a lot of, more of a farming community of that. What hit us, brought to our attention is John Deere, who seemed to be the big name out there that on these newer tractors, a farmer can't go get it. Well, he'd go get, like, say, a generator and he can put it on his tractor, but the tractor won't operate until the dealership comes out with the computer program and reprograms everything for that tractor. That just surfaced in the Star Tribune the other day. What do you think's going to happen with that? Because at the price a tractor sells for, they ought to be able to throw that damn program in with it and excuse the French.
Who are you asking that of, me?
I'm looking at three people that probably all will be encountered.
So there was a bill that I was, that I was aware of, I'm sure you guys are as well, that right now, we can't really go in and fix our own phones, right? There's a law against it or we don't have the knowledge, we don't have the ingredients or recipe, if you will. Same thing with the large equipment, your John Deeres or Katz, you can't go in and fix it yourself. According to law, you have to allow John Deere or Caterpillar or Apple to fix your phone. Some kind of data privacy law, whatever it is. So there has been talk about legislation that will allow the consumer to have the the instructions and access to how to fix our own phones or how to fix our own John Deere or heavy equipment. But the concern on many folks that produce those big machinery is that if a farmer has full access to the machine he bought, which he should. If you buy a brand new $100,000, $200,000 combine, should you have the, should you have the authority to fix it yourself?
Yes.
I think so.
Well, $500,000 are.
$500,000. Those organizations, John Deere, Caterpillar are saying, you know what? It's pretty complicated equipment. If you go in there and fix it and it gets wrecked or you run over something or kill someone, we're at fault. So we're taking the, reserving the rights to do that. Is that what you're talking about, Leander?
Yeah. See, we're kind of used to it a little bit because on steam engines, we can't do our own welding on them. They have to all be done by a licensed welder. But when we farm, we did, we had our own repair shop, tractors seldom left to farm. And I mean, I could, one of the fellows that's a repairman on his own private, he, he's a private repairman not working with the dealership. And he had the same thing because even though he can fix that old tractor and he's gone to tax school to learn how to fix those tractors, but yet if he went and got the part, he'd have to get the dealership to come out and program it to get things to operate. And I mean, he's gone to school to be perfectly qualified to whatever, so.
So those are some of the issues that we.
It's a C.Y.A. problem.
Yes, those are some of the issues we face in the Capitol, from distracted driving to education, funding for education. And then you got the farm implemented dealers and a lot of the small mom and pop businesses that say, Joe, if you vote for this, we won't have a shop in Waverly or Montrose to fix heavy equipment.
That's right.
So, and then you'll have a farmer saying, well, Joe, we want the, we bought the machinery, we should be allowed to fix it. So those are some of the issues that we're faced with. I don't, we haven't had a vote on, there hasn't been a bill that we had to vote on yet.
I mean, that sounds like Apple and John Deere lobbying dollars more so than.
John Deere company.
Than issues, liability issues.
Is there a point of contention where if you go work on it and it's the tractor that they'll, the warranty, yeah, so they're not, I mean, I've got a buddy that works for John Deere. He's a lawyer and he has to fly all around and figure out the legalities and things like that. You know, so I don't know if it's a law because they don't, you know, because he'll try to come back and say, oh, well, you know, you worked on it, now they've got to fix it. I don't know if that, I don't know if that's.
It's a car, it's a car, right? You bring it to the dealer, tell the warranty's over, then you better be able to take it wherever you want.
I can, I can actually share a story that might make more sense with that. Years ago, I worked home care for a gentleman who was a quadriplegic on a vet. He became a quadriplegic because he went at the age of 12. His father owned a small engine repair shop. One day, the whole family was gone to whatever events. This young boy decides to take this three-wheeler out for a joyride. He goes and grabs his friend and they go out for a joyride. They launch the three-wheeler off a field approach. The young boy becomes paralyzed. The parents went after the three-wheeler company. They found an expert person to testify against the three-wheeler company. They win this lawsuit, millions of dollars. That three-wheeler company had to change all of their rules, their regulations. They may have even gone out of business. You don't see three-wheelers anymore, you see four-wheelers. So that might be one, one thing that can put this into perspective as to what is happening with that. I'm not saying I agree with this, I'm just saying that it's something that puts it into perspective.
We're a religious society.
But why can't, why, why does a tractor company, I mean, why don't you buy a tractor from a company that says, hey, we'll let you, we'll let you repair it? You know, I mean, why, why can't they say, no, you can't repair it? I mean, you know, you're, you're making a law saying that the company can't do this. Go to a different company that will let you buy a tractor to repair it, you know? Add rules off it.
And the challenge that we have actually is that this is an interstate commerce issue. So it's very challenging for just Minnesota to say, hey, you have to give all the schematics to the customer when no other state does that. That's violating some interstate commerce laws and regulations. So really, this is a federal issue, although we talk about it in the state. People want to introduce legislation at the state and really it's not a state issue.
California does that stuff all the time, don't they?
Yeah, they sure do.
We don't want to be like California, right?
Yeah, right?
But it's, you know, I serve on the Commerce Committee and this is a real big challenge because you're talking about something that's sold not only across the United States, but across the globe, so.
That's some valid trouble.
I'm a manufacturer of rail turnovers and we, our rail turnovers have computers on. And we'll unload railcars and fly all computerized. We locked out our code system so the facility cannot get into it. The reason we do it is liability. We don't want the law firms coming after us because there was an incident. And we have to do it. I mean, I wouldn't want the government coming and telling us that we have to open up the code to our clients. Now, the other thing that we do, we've got parameters that can be changed. So they can go in the computer and change certain parameters and limit, limit those parameters or expand them. But we know that that's not going to cause a problem or cause an accident. So I'm just saying, I don't want the government telling me I have to open up the code because of liability.
Well, you have the equipment that you're, that you own the equipment that they're unloading this stuff, right?
No, I manufacture the equipment, like John Deere manufactures tractors.
Okay, so if I buy it from you and I own it? I don't own it if you, if you're not giving me the information I need to manage my equipment. You would affect still own part of it.
He's selling it to you under, under a combination that you won't do that.
Yeah, I don't want you to go online and change in the code that's going to cause an accident. Because then you're going to.
Are you giving me the information to repair it? Are you giving me the information to repair it? Because that's actually what we're talking about, right? I'm also not getting the call from GM on how to turbo whatever, you know, take jumpers off or whatever.
Now, if you want to take it off the hydraulic pump, another hydraulic pump, I'm surprised. But I don't want you to go into the code. I don't want you changing the code, that's all I'm saying. Because the code is what is going to draw the lawyers off. And then we're going to be out of business because of what you just said, millions of dollars. It would take us out, so. We have to, we have to protect that.
I have a veteran's question, being a vet myself. Fort Snelling's going to be full by 2040. What's the state going to do?
The state right now has got, has opened up a little, little vaults of state.
Right, well, I, I know all that. I'm talking about Fort Snelling specifically because that's a federal cemetery, not a state. If my wife wants to get buried with me at Fort Snelling, she don't have to pay. State, she does. So is there any way the state can look at expanding Fort Snelling?
No, we don't have any jurisdiction over Fort Snelling. It's all federal. Federal government will have to make that jurisdiction.
But who owns Fort Snelling? The park?
The federal government.
Down by the river or that whole area is owned by the federal government? Across, down the hill, behind the.
I don't know all the parameters, I don't all the.
Yeah, that's state land down there.
That's state land.
But you want to.
The cemetery itself is federal.
Right. Their bodies float.
There's, my question is, is there a way they can expand it or maybe.
We can make, we can make a proposal to the federal government to ask them to consider, and that's been talked about by the Commissioner Larry Gerkey for the state affairs, about what is the state going to do when Fort Snelling gets full?
It's not that far away.
I know, I know.
Some of us will be dead by that time.
I don't know. I haven't heard the answer.
2040, 2040, yeah.
Are they saying you can't bury him in Fort Snelling?
He's hoping that, well, he can be buried in Fort Snelling.
Who, you or your family?
My wife, being a vet, I can be buried in Fort Snelling. Okay, my wife can be buried at Fort Snelling with, with no funeral.
True.
If I have to go to a state cemetery, a veteran's state cemetery, she has to pay.
Because my father-in-law was buried in Houston and my wife's mother passed away this past summer. Now, what we did is move him, Houston, Fort Sam Houston, San Antonio. And she was buried with him in San Antonio. Now, do they have land? Obviously they do, but that, those cemeteries are no different than Fort Snelling, okay? And you could go anywhere. By the way, you could go to Fort Sam Houston and take your wife there and he could go anywhere in the country.
I'm from Minnesota, I'm not from Texas.
No, but it has anything to do with Texas.
I'm not, I can't get buried at Arlington because that's so restrictive. Arlington, you have to basically be a Medal of Honor winner now to get a spot. It's so restrictive, it's not open. Anyway, that's, I just wanted to know if there was anything the state could work with the federal government on in advance of plenty of time, plenty of notice, to figure out a solution.
I'll bring that up to the Commissioner again, but I know we've talked about it many times before. I don't, I'm not having feedback from the Commissioner to know exactly what is in the works on the federal level. If Congressman Emmer was here, maybe we could get some information from him because he is the federal representative for the area.
Now, I do have a second question, maybe. It's an education question. So if my children go to school in Minneapolis, the state gives the city of Minneapolis per student, how much money?
Too much.
Is that amount the exact same that if my kids went to school in Buffalo?
No.
That you need to fix.
Yeah, we've been trying.
Because what is it, a three-tiered system or three tiers or something?
Oh, the three-tiered system is the alcohol sales system.
Okay, well, sorry, but why is it a kid down in Minneapolis is worth so much more than a kid in Wright County?
Talking about a niche, it's poverty.
I bet there's as many poor people in Wright County percentage-wise as there is in Minneapolis. And I bet there's more millionaires in Minneapolis than there is in the rest of the outer state.
Back in 1992, 1990, 1992, the school system in Wright County and surrounding districts sued the state of Minnesota and they lost. Because they felt that they were being unfairly left out as far as the amount of money that they get per student. The graduation rate in Wright County for every school is over almost 95% versus school districts in Minneapolis are under 50. They're at 48% graduation rates.
Parental involvement.
Well, there's none there.
They don't go to school.
No.
That's their biggest problem.
We've, we've been trying to push against that whole thing years.
Well, and to see that.
I think it just needs to be fair. I think every kid should be worth the same amount of money wherever they live in the state. If it's on a reservation, if it's wherever, it should be just one set amount. And then that school district needs to work within that budget. Instead of having a billion dollars.
Doctor of the choir.
So there's actually a, so there's a coalition, there's a coalition of people called C. So it's Students for Equity in Education, which is exactly what you're saying. And all of our school districts are a member of the C organization. The C organization is actually having a public meeting and I'm going to invite you to that because we will all be speaking there and a whole bunch more of us. Yep, it is January 29th, Wednesday at 6:30 at the Buffalo Discovery School. So it'll be, it'll be superintendents and school board members and mayors and administration from school districts in the cities and all of us and the public are invited. The parents are invited.
Chevron County, Meeker County, Carver County, Wright County. There's four counties that are going to be involved with that, C. And C was the one that brought the lawsuit against the state of Minnesota back in 1992 and then lost it in 94.
I actually got in trouble my freshman year. I got in big trouble my freshman year for pointing out this big inequity because at that time, Minneapolis and St. Paul's school districts were getting around 15 and a half thousand per pupil. And out here, we were getting around 8,000. Or even then, it was more, it was closer to 7,500 at that time. And so we were actually in a transportation committee hearing. And I pointed that out and because somebody from the Minneapolis school district had the audacity to come before the transportation committee to ask for more money so they could put their kids with bus passes on public transportation so they could come and go as they wanted. And I thought, we can't even afford buses in greater Minnesota, what are you talking about? So I kind of went off the rail. And I actually had a whole group of C parents and school board members and administration that happened to be there visiting me at that very moment in time, was not planned. And they had their little signs and they put their signs up and I was giving my little speech in my freshman year of transportation and kind of giving it to the, you know, the superintendent of the Minneapolis school district. And I got in big trouble from the committee chair. He had a private meeting, he was a Democrat, I was a Republican. So, yeah, he came in and had a private meeting with me to say that was inappropriate. I'm like, you know what? I don't care, this is what we need to talk about and it needs to be said. So we've been fighting, I've been fighting since I first got elected for Equity in Education. And if you want to come and voice those concerns, we're having a public meeting.
Would love to have a call.
Yeah, unless you fix Highway 12 so that I can get from downtown Minneapolis a year before 6:30 at night?
Well, it'll be going for a while, so feel free to come anytime you get there. But you're welcome.
Hi, I'm John Peterson from Marysville. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing to be, yourself to be elected because I appreciate your service and Senator Anderson, your service, mayor, council members. My question is kind of a, on the education question. We're hearing the recent news and I don't know the answer, it's just pretty fresh on Senator, Councilmember Page, Supreme Court Justice Page and the guy from the Federal Reserve pushing the right of education amendment to the Constitution. My questions are what, how, do you have any input or any feedback on what they're pushing for exactly? Because I've been reading the articles, they're trying to make education a right. I'm not saying if it's good or bad or whatever, I'm just curious as to what you know about that.
As far as education, our founders of Minnesota thought education was so important. It is in our constitution. So the state of Minnesota is our constitution that we swear and uphold and defend. It is a must, the state must educate our kids. And then the question is how much and where and how and why? So I don't know what Supreme Justice Page is propelling or proposing, but it is already in our constitution that we must educate our kids.
It's basically fair and equitable. It's basically fair and equitable, but.
But do you have something else we have to amend the constitution? That's my question. I'm always like, I always hate laws being made to address something. I'm just curious, why do we have to amend the constitution to make it a right?
Yeah, I have not heard that. Have you heard that?
Yeah, it's been on the news on a regular rate the last two weeks now. And I think what I'm hearing, and I have not talked to the chairman, but I know that the Education Minnesota, which is a union, is against it. They don't want to see this constitutional amendment, because it's gonna cut through some, a lot of red tape. And I don't know, I haven't seen the legislation. See, they've brought it forward, but they haven't given the details to us, and it's been kind of sparse as far as, and you got, you're asking the same question that, you know, what is this all about? And so, that's, we're gonna find out when it gets introduced on February eleventh, because I'm sure that's what's gonna happen. It'll be a constitutional amendment that the governor doesn't have to sign, and it has to pass both the House and the Senate. So, we're leery a little bit. We think that we've already got constitutional language that fairly meets the needs of our kids here. But they're going a little bit step further, and they're, and I don't know exactly, but from what I understand is they're trying to cut through some red tape, and I don't know what that red tape is. But when you hear the education union doesn't like it, they probably won't go far.
Question, is it a common occurrence for you to learn about the contents of legislation at the last minute?
Yes.
And if so, is there anything that we can do about it as lawyers?
Oh, boy. Be there. All I can say is if you're looking at, if you're looking at whatever, whether it's transportation, agriculture, healthcare, whatever the issue might be, you're almost gonna have to be involved on a, at least a weekly basis to know what's transpiring in committees. Whatever issue you have.
Let me ask it a different way.
What's that?
Who's responsible for holding back that legislation until the last minute? That is, because what I've learned over the years is that's very infuriating. I'm infuriated for you, okay? If we should, it's not fair and it's not right to hold back the details of legislation until right before it gets, you know, put up for a vote.
Okay, let me ask that, Luke. That's partially correct, but not entirely. All bills that are an omnibus bill, by the way, state constitution forbids a big omnibus bill. You know what an omnibus bill is? So, in education, there may be three hundred different bills. School district Delano needs thirty, twenty million for a new building, whatever. And the city of Annalee, the school of Annalee may need a little extra money here. So, in that omnibus bill, there's many different bills that are just for education. All those bills, for the most part, probably a hundred percent, maybe ninety-nine point five, because no, it's perfect, already went through committee. They went through the committee in the House side, they went to committee in the Senate side, they went to a conference committee, where the Senate and the House went together after being, not only voted out of the Senate or the House committees, but then off the floor. All state reps voted off the House floor, all senators voted off the Senate floor, then they come together for a conference committee. And that becomes one big transportation or education bill with three hundred little bills. Some of them could be with Monticello, who had a deficit. Marion had a bill to help Monticello, who had a two-million-dollar deficit or whatever.
The department shorted them.
Sure. Another thing in that bill would be an increase to education for all school districts. So, you understand, there's all little bills. So, every legislator and staff had an opportunity through three, four months to read those bills and know what's in it. Then our staff will go through and give us summaries of what's in the bill, what's good about it, what's bad about it. The Democrats do it on their side, Republicans do it on this side. Here's a summary. Here's what we like, here's what we don't like, here's what it says. And then at the last, sometimes the last days or last hours of session, in another conference committee, again, it's been filtered, right? It's been filtered through many filters. So, if you don't know about it, it's your own day and fault. Joe Maitland.
Okay.
But sometimes at the last minute, Luke, you are correct in this, that something will change within that bill. They'll take something out and put something in that already has been through the committee process. And then give it to us with only sometimes a minute or an hour to read.
That's what you say, pass the buck, right?
Yeah, pass the buck, right. But for the most part, those bills have already been through the committee process and then read and debated.
Changing it at the last minute after it's been through the process, is that a common occurrence or not?
At the end of the day, when the Senate and the House and the governor meet, they will take what, the Republicans will like some things, and will have to give us some things, the Democrats will have to give and take some things. So, it is a common occurrence, but I don't think that we should.
Not new.
But it's not new.
Not new language.
Not new language.
No.
Does it have.
They would take out language, but not add new language. I don't even know procedurally how you would add new language, it's never had a hearing, never.
But it's happened.
I'm sure twenty-six years it's happened, but.
Not perfect, but for the most part, it's had hearings and public input. But I think it'd be a shame if the people thought that your elected officials at the Capitol, be it Democrat or Republican, be it the governor or the Senate of the House, is passing bills that never saw the light of day or never had public opinion. If that's the case, then we're doomed as a society.
Well, I was just under the impression that it was a fairly common occurrence that things were being held close to the vest until the very last minute before you had a chance to vote.
Some things, and we're not perfect. The only time we'll be perfect is when we're in heaven. So, some things do get through the cracks, but for the most part, things are debated, debated in public opinion. And the day that stops, then we need to revolt.
But this last session, as Marion's already mentioned, everything got vetoed at the, on the last day of session. And then we went into special session for four, five days. And everything got reconstituted within those four to five days. I mean, they went late into the, one, two o'clock in the morning, with just three people, the governor or the governor's staff, Gazelka, and Bartman, and their staff. And that's, they take all the stuff that got vetoed and they redo and put it into a House file zero, 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 one, zero, 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 two. I mean, you start the whole process and you pass everything that got vetoed and take out what the governor doesn't like, what the House doesn't like, what the Senate doesn't like, and then you put it into a brand-new bill. It's already been gone over, but you're putting this stuff here, and it's looked like, well, looks like Capitol, the Capitol.
Is that comparable to like the line item veto?
Huh?
A line item veto where you can just strike stuff out that you don't like?
Line item veto is only for financial, they can't get rid of policy.
He just means like the concept. But conceptually, that's basically what happened with the three. So, if one of the three said no, then that, that policy, that bill, that.
Didn't go in.
It was eliminated. But it is really, really rare that you add something. It's more of a taking away process. I mean, I would say ninety-nine point one, whatever percent is all, the language is all there and they're just taking stuff out. So, they have the Senate bill, the House bill, and they're trying to decide which of those pieces are gonna go in. But I don't, I mean, you've been there a long time, but I've never seen it where they added a whole new, you know, bill of something that we've never heard.
We're not like Nancy Pelosi, pass it so you can know what's in it.
I would say it's very rare.
So, I don't know how much time we have left. Michelle, we have, so whatever? So, a couple of issues.
So, you can.
Question.
You know, when the tech that, the tech that we can't legally want now, like you have a list of tech and legally there?
Have, what? I'm sorry, didn't understand.
Of tech, I think he's talking about the phones.
Oh, back to that question of.
Do you know what, what things that you can practice, we want now?
I think he's talking about tractors and stuff. Yeah.
Yeah.
Most things, I think, right?
Yeah, most things, I think, one, we are in America where there's freedom, there's consequences to every action that's taken, but if I wanted to fix my own phone, I could do it, it's my phone, I bought it, right?
But they, you know, they're hard to afford.
Yeah, if I broke it, Apple or Verizon wouldn't replace it, so I'd have, be my own risk. Does that answer your question?
So, we don't have a list, we don't, we don't know, but probably things that technology is probably, has proprietary information, and Apple and the like are not willing to give up the proprietary information.
You got locked out of your phone, they were trying to fix that?
Yeah, that can happen. Yep, there's a lesson right there. Bring it to the experts, to fix. So, we have marijuana, this could be on the floor in the House and the Senate, do you want us to legalize that?
No, no. Yes.
I think it's.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
I'm against it, but.
Raise your hand.
You guys will get paid, you guys will collect the money.
You don't like voting, but.
Giving out more of a bigger surplus.
A second-hand car? And you all get just drive through uptown and you follow a car, it's just like, building now.
Well, if you were in favor of it, you're in for some bad news. Again, your Senator, the Senate, Gazelka said they're not gonna pass it at all on the Senate side. And it's probably a good thing. We got data from Colorado in regards to homelessness, traffic fatalities, traffic accidents, violent outbreaks, and domestic assaults, all went up. I don't crucify the messenger here, but that's what the Colorado statistics gave to us when we asked what happened when they legalized marijuana. So, if we want to, if we want to risk that, let's go for it.
But Colorado's not the only state, right, that has it legal right now? So, what did the other states that have it legal? What did the most significant statistics say from those states?
We haven't, I haven't seen.
I don't know.
It's a good, we should look at other, more than just Colorado.
Illinois has one of the first this year.
Michigan did too.
So, Colorado's, when I was an early doctor, I think it's California, that's why we look at those numbers.
But I go back to my college days, right, and in debate, we didn't have a choice whether we went pro or con on something, but marijuana was one of the things that we had to debate on legalization or not. And if my, it's a while back, but if my memory serves me correct, the largest reason why hemp, I guess, actually not marijuana, but hemp as a cash crop disappeared was because it was in direct competition with the petroleum byproducts, right? The nylon, the rayon, the different things like that. Hemp was a superior cash crop, right? So.
Yep.
So, the farmers didn't have the same lobbying dollars as the petroleum companies, and so that was a big reason in which it won away as a cash crop, right? But if you take a look at it from, from the addictiveness, right, and the different things, you know, going down that line, is, it's really no different than whether or not you've had a drink, right? But it's less addictive, it has less effects on, you were talking about domestic assault and different things like that. It actually has the opposite effect of enraging and causing those types of things than alcohol and things like that. So, I mean, realistically, well, from some of the things that I've looked at, right?
Well, maybe, maybe the marijuana in the seventies, but the marijuana today, so like the THC oils that they are, the kids are baking, is ninety-seven percent THC, and just a few hits of it will cause them to go into psychosis.
Okay.
And brain damage that is not repairable.
See, I'm not, I'm talking about smoking regular marijuana.
Well, you can legalize it, you get it all. You get it all. So, you have to look at, so we as lawmakers have to look at the worst-case scenario. We're already seeing kids, and I talk to the school districts all the time, and they're already seeing cases where they've had kids go to ER with an episode of psychosis where they've had brain damage that they're not recovering from.
Or lung damage.
And lung, well, that's the, that's also the THC.
Is that from the bad part, Chisholm? This is a knockout from China? China, yeah.
What about the, the two manufacturers of legalized, of the marijuana or medicine?
Yep.
They want to start growing their own weed and sell them, roll them, what, what do you guys think about that?
So, they're already losing money.
Right.
So, they're costing the taxpayer money.
That's because of the process to turn it into an oil or whatever.
Which they knew when they passed, when we passed the legislation, which I opposed back then, we knew that that was gonna be the case. Because it also, they make it sound like it's a pharmaceutical product when it's not even anywhere close. They've done absolutely nothing that pharmaceuticals have, pharmaceutical companies have to do to test a product. So, you know, they proposed it like it was a medicinal, you know, pharmaceutical type thing, and it wasn't any, it wasn't that at all. I'm just, the pharmaceutical industry and the process.
They want to grow weed and they want to sell it so you can smoke. That's what they want to do. They just have the big spread, you know, scare your people.
Yeah, what they want to do, that may be.
Are they gonna pull off the hallucinants? Part of it, and just make sure it's.
That's the CBD.
Well, you can remediate, you can remediate the THC out, but it's.
But they see it's still a process, right?
So, when they, when they brought the legislation to us, they said that the medical marijuana would have zero THC, and that is not true. Because I talked to the Department of Health, that is in charge of the medical marijuana program, and they said, yes, it does have THC, which that was in direct contradiction to what we legalized. So, we legalized a product that was essentially with CBD, with no THC. That is not what the state of Minnesota is currently growing. So, I would be opposed because they've already lied to the legislature when they brought it forth, and they're already, again, they're not following the law now. These two brokers are not following the law because there's supposed to be no THC in that product, because it's supposed to be medicinal, but you don't need THC for medicinal. And it's counterintuitive, it's counterproductive to have THC in a medicinal product, which is why CBD is so popular.
But the state is, the state is following what they said by being point, what is it? Point, point three THC.
Point three is for hemp.
Well, you can.
So, hemp products are considered hemp products because they're point three percent or less.
That's for the CBD side.
That's for CBD that is made from hemp, because hemp is legal.
Hemp is legal.
Right.
You can talk about all the bad things about marijuana, and I'll grant, they're all there. And I still disagree with you a little bit on it, but I can tell you right now, we have a justice big killer in this state that's been here for, since they had prohibition removed, and drunk drivers, and how many are killed every darn week or month or whatever? And my father was hit by a drunk driver one mile east of Buffalo in nineteen fifty-three, very seriously injured. The drunk driver had no insurance, had no property, had nothing, they didn't do a thing to him, and they still don't do a damn thing to him. So, let's talk about what's bad and get rid of alcohol then, too.
Dan, do you have a question?
Yeah, the hemp and the, they get tested over, before you harvest it, you're supposed to call the state, and so they come out and test if they've been hot. You might as well invite your neighbors over, because you gotta burn it, you might as well, they hopefully burn it high. If it's below, you can harvest it, you gotta hang it, shred it, dry it, to get the CBD oil out of it. But is hemp and marijuana two different things?
Completely different things.
Hemp is a great product. Go anywhere.
That's legal, right?
They're exactly the same thing, like cannabis sativa. So, technically the same plant, just when you get to point three nine, right, or four percent THC, now it's legally considered marijuana, and below that, it's legally considered hemp. But they're exactly the same plant. But my question about hemp is, is there anything in, for infrastructure going forward for hemp materials? Paper, plastics?
Rope clothing?
Rope, clothing, I mean, there's so many things going on, and our infrastructure is miles behind, say China and some of those other places. Does Minnesota have any plans?
A pilot program is, is in the works right now.
No, no, I'm part of the pilot program, I know that.
Oh.
But do they have any plans to create the infrastructure to grind out those grains, fiber grains and, and turn it into bioplastics or get a clothing manufacturer in here that can use that product?
That I, I would have to talk to the ag committee and find out from both its policy and the finance chair. I'm not sure if that's approached. I don't sit on ag committees, I don't know all the different people that came and testified and they may have. I don't know that, yeah. I haven't heard if there's.
Representative Mary Franzin from Alexandria for the last, her and I were elected together in 2010. And I think the last four years, she's been working on legislation that would allow for farmers of hemp and the manufacturing of it, for the uses of clothing, rope and other materials. I don't know where it's at right now, but every year she brings it forward and has a committee and talks about it. So if you went to her website, Mary Franzin from Alexandria, she's a wonderful gal, you can find her from her district, uh, you can find a little bit more about some of the legislation she's working on, the progress that has been in Minnesota.
It's kind of chicken and egg with hemp because you got to have the product for somebody to want to make it, but you got to grow it. But no, we can take it when you grow it. So if there's a. If hemp is currently legal, why do we need legislation to be able to, well, to use it in manufacturing? I, that would confuse me.
I suppose it would be the regulation and/or how the, how the farmer will set up and distribute and sell and then the amount of THC that's in the product itself. Uh, so you'd have to have some guidelines in order for it to proceed.
And the federal government has, is never.
They're on a different page with that.
I know. They don't, and so basically they have, that's a higher level of law that is stricter than what Minnesota has.
That makes sense.
And he got their nose in too many things, that's the problem.
Tenth Amendment, right? State's rights.
Uh, have you guys heard anything about our, about the legislation, anything about civil defense? If a nuclear war breaks out, are you going to probably defend or help protect citizens of the state?
Duck and cover.
What's that?
Duck and cover.
Duck and cover.
The veterans care here.
What's that? It was a good joke, but, you know, I mean, I mean, we just saw a run-up. I mean, in January, it's a perfect escalation crisis. In December, China, Russia and Iran held a naval exercise together. And then, um, whether you think it's tied in or not, but then the next month, within 15 days, you know, Trump assassins a Iranian general. I mean, and this goes up and down and we've seen it like back in 16, we've seen it with North Korea. But I mean, all this is going to do, it just keeps going boom, boom, boom. And it just doesn't seem like we have like the, either the infrastructure, the knowledge or the determination to, to actually, I mean, if the federal government doesn't do anything, I think it would rely on the state government to produce something.
Do you have a comment?
Well, um, yes, I have a trace of the mantras. Um, and I just have been taking college courses and investigating Wright County for the nuclear power plant and I could not find anything online about our plan because.
You have to talk, you have to talk to the emergency manager in Wright County, right? And they'll do that prior.
Online even, like it doesn't discuss, like, is, I had to do a full led report on our county. We went to a, I was going to a respite in college in Hutchinson. Anyways, in there, I found out that, you know, Minneapolis, downtown Minneapolis is only 30 minutes away. So I had to do a study of how many people are affected by the nuclear power plant in Monticello and just all the ramifications that we have from the nuclear power plant being within 18 miles of Montrose. First off, that we have radiation out of here being given to us because we live close to a nuclear power plant. And the fact that there was nothing on there saying, what are, what are your.
Have you contacted Xcel Energy?
I have not.
Because I received, I, I am on Wright County Electric, but I have received a pamphlet, a big pamphlet like this here with all different directions and things to, how to deal with the nuclear crisis.
Okay.
So if you haven't been given that or been sent to you, if you haven't been.
I don't even think people are aware in this city or like in this area or the fact that, you know, there, I didn't realize until I was doing all this reporting for.
Just look north and see where the coal plant, where the wind goes, it never comes directly south.
They did not. Well, I have been inside of a nuclear power plant so many times, I can't even tell you. Both Monticello and Wright County. Okay, so, and I've actually stood right next to the cooling pool. So these are hot rods that are down in the water, there's 30 feet of water on top of the rods that are 14 feet tall. And I wear a Geiger counter every time I go and I've never gotten even one millibar of radiation inside the plant on top of the hot rods. So we are not getting radiated out here. That's a misnomer, I don't know who told you that, but there is no radiation even on top of the hot rods. I have been inside of the plant, walked throughout the entire plant, walked in places literally where there were, there was hot rods right below me. I've never gotten even one millibar radiation. You will actually get more radiation on an airplane than you ever will walking through, walking through the inside of a nuclear power plant. I actually, I just, a couple, one month ago, I went to Idaho Falls to the National Resource, the National, the National, uh, well, it's a research facility, so for nuclear power. And looked, we went inside of another facility where they put all kinds of hot and radioactive material behind lead and leaded glass and everything. Again, you know, I was right next to all of that and didn't get a single millibar of radiation. So, um, it only takes about 14 feet of water to even protect you from hot radiation, hot rods. I was above 30 feet. So everything that they do at the nuclear power plant is protection on top of protection on top of protection on top of protection. And they have redundant, believe me, they have unbelievably redundant systems to make sure that nothing ever happens. If something does, if a tornado hits it, they have plans for that. If they lose power, they have plans for that. If somehow we have some sort of crazy earthquake, which I can't imagine how because we're not in a seismic zone, they have plans for everything.
It's the exact same, it's the exact same reactor as Fukushima.
Well, it is only, only because it's the type of boiler that it is.
No, it's the exact same reactor down to the controls and everything. When we went there, they explained all that and they explained how Fukushima happened and why it would happen.
Yeah. Uh, well, then you understand all the redundant systems and about.
I don't understand, I was just.
Well, I do. On top of that, they have an emergency management plan. So if the worst thing could possibly happen, they have an entire evacuation plan for all of the citizens, the schools, um, and they know exactly the radiation zone of, you know, where they have to go. So my, so my kids used to go to Buffalo and they went through those drills. The Monticello residents and school districts go through those drills. They do those emergency drills every year. Everybody knows what to do. They're very planned, the radiation would never get this far. I, I, there's just, we're not going to have a tsunami, we're not going to have an earthquake. And that's what happened in, for Fukushima. So, um, if you would like that information, you can get ahold of Xcel and they'll, they'll give you all that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I think we're getting to the end of our forum, a debate, right, Mary?
We've got some kids that got to go to school tomorrow.
They have to go to school tomorrow. Delano has two hours late, a new program they have once a month on Wednesdays. Uh, so our kids get to speak tomorrow. But any other pressing questions or any lasting things you want to send a message to us before we start session February 11th? Do so now. And/or you can always get ahold of us at the Capitol through our website, through a phone call. We're listed in the phone book and easily attainable to get ahold of.
If any of you are veterans and you've already mentioned that you are, we're having Vet's Day on the Hill on April 20th. So if people would like to come down and be a part of that, meet your legislators, come meet your mate, we'll have a room set aside for people to come down and talk about vets issues or discuss other things that you have on your mind. But it's for veterans and if you brought in last year, we had, we must have had 500 people that came from all over the state of Minnesota busting for Vet's Day on the Hill. So love to have you come down and be a part of that.
Yeah, if you have any other issues as well or know friends or neighbors that have an issue with Minture or dental insurance or any other state related issues, we are there to help. And we all often get calls and meet with our constituents who are having troubles, sign it up for Minture or being reimbursed by Dental, Delta, Delta Dental or whatever the case may be, we can help if you want to help. What?
They're car title.
They're car title. Yeah, if you, if you need a passport and you need it quickly, call Tom Emmer. If you need a license, quickly call one of us. Anything else? Kids, what'd you think? Did you learn anything tonight? Nope, this young man again. What'd you, what'd you learn?
Do you know, do you know money and gas? Hotel boy, yeah.
Amen. We'll tell the governor. Dan, blessing anything?
Good. Want to grow hemp?
Want to grow hemp? Well, on behalf of Senator Anderson and Representative O'Neal and myself, thank you so much for coming tonight, spending a good two hours with us and the city of Montrose and Deb Elter for inviting us. And we look forward to the next debate and contact us any time for other questions.